You introduce yourself. And with your introductions, we can move along. One of the things I gained in these is spending an hour in meetings with everybody to each other by story. So, we can just say hello to each other if you don't have a hat full up unless you just feel the need to. So, Laura, you take the first one.
I'm Laura Meister. I'm a volunteer who publishes advocating for animals. And I've been doing TNR for about ten years. And I'm a pet that's trapped in the TNR for six hundred cats on Long Island.
And Wes, I'm a member of CAPA also.
Karen Kraus, the director of the feral cat, called you, Lauren.
Kwaye Diemal, I'm a volunteer at WHS.
Dee Dee Swan, Salem, Prince of Felines.
Emily Fuller, I'm a TNR community volunteer.
Dennis Warner, from Salem, Prince of Felines, not from TNR.
Veronica Murray, from Salem, Prince of Felines, and TNR.
Corinne Rossa, volunteer, friends of felines, TNR.
Edith Walters, I'm a volunteer at WHS.
I'm Susan Carey, work here at WHS.
We have a little girl.
Always here.
Paul Hanks, volunteer.
She's a doctor, volunteer.
I'm a nurse, and I'm a medicalian.
John Webb, I'm a county animal shelter. I work at New York.
Jessica Farron, the shelter manager here.
I'm Alice Barr, the foster and rescue coordinator here.
Dr. Jack Verder, I'm a rescue coordinator here.
BJ Anderson, I'm a volunteer manager here.
I'm Tracy Crandall, and I'm a volunteer here at WHS.
Meredith School, Development Systems.
Allee Chrisisson, finance director here at the shelter.
Regular, um, interesting person.
It's always good to these meetings to have one regular person. Uh, Jay, I think we're done.
Yeah, so I'm Jay Levitree, communications manager at Willamette Humane.
I'm Shannon Graves, concerned citizen. Good. Cat lady.
Cat lady, I'm a person.
I'm Shabla, organize and council of the Humane Society of the United States.
Okay. Was that everybody? And so, anyways, if you did a big name tag that I can read, that's okay. I just hope you didn't call me by that name. So, if you would rather have a name tag than have a call, maybe. Uh, my name is Corinne Boyum, and I'm new to the Pacific Northwest. I recently retired from the city of Austin in Austin, Texas. Um, and was tired of heat, so I moved up here, Wisconsin. Um, I, in the city of Austin, I was an executive. What I did was a troubleshooter. I went to departments that weren't doing very well and I felt were doing better. And my last department that I had before I left was our animal shelter in Austin. Open intake, probably opened and operated in animal shelter in Austin, now, or those words. Um, and I've been doing some work with the bins, so spayed litter group, um, and turned them. And we used work with them, some folks in Salem, you know, in the mountains, and heard we talked about there are cats up there. And he asked me, if I could back this side of the mountains and help them talk about cats a little bit. Um, one of the things that we did in Austin is I was really crazed about prevention programs. I felt like our shelters throughout the United States were really going treadmill. Animals coming in the door, trying to get them out the door, and go away or the other. And it seemed to me that there were problems that needed to stop the treadmill, slow down. So, my first five or seven years at the animal shelter in Austin focused primarily on prevention programs. So, we started with free sterilization program for our low income families. Uh, we started, um, TNR, pre-TNR program. Uh, we worked with our, um, not other, our partner nonprofits to help our poor, low cost community. And then we also ensured that a hundred percent of the animals leaving our rescue groups and our shelters in the Austin area, that a hundred percent of those animals are leaving the shelter intact, I mean, dogs or the... So, um, so I have some experience with these programs. And I'm really proud of what we did. So, I feel like I have some things that I can share with you and some things that I can help you have a discussion about what's happening in this community and how you can move forward and do some really positive things for cats. Our program, and also I'll tell you just to give you, since we started with three hundred cats the first year we did, um, our TNR program. And that program today does about three thousand animals a year, thirty-five hundred. Um, so we started with little baby steps. From those little baby steps, made a really exciting program that really has made a huge difference. As kind of a final thought, um, the last time I took my time at the shelter, we started focusing on handling up our placement program. So, when I went to that shelter, we started, we had an euthanasia rate of seven percent. And the day I left, we had an euthanasia rate of ten percent. And I've been gone about two years now, and they're still maintaining euthanasia rate of ten percent, which is considered a kill of this disease in the industry. So, I tell you that, not to brag, although it's fun. Um, but I tell you that because I think that it proves that prevention programs get communities where they need to be if their goal is to be more humane, um, with humans. It really does work. You never think of death with placement alone, never. Because the treadmill was just going faster and faster, which is why the placement was just empty. So, um, and we have improved out of some of these communities that started small, you can build bigger things, and you really will have much of a disimpact. Any questions, Rodney?
Is that thirty-five hundred a year now fairly stable from what you hear?
Yes, it is. And it was built, um, the way we got that program is we did the three hundred cats as a demonstration program because we wanted the ASPCA to give us a lot of money. And I knew that if we proved that we could do it right, that they would, or I was hoping they would. And so, the three hundred cats that we did the year in year one, our pilot project, were targeted to specific colonies that were getting any kittens. So, they weren't just three hundred random cats. They were three hundred cats that were giving us kittens. And we knew that, we knew these cats. And so, those are the ones that we sterilized that first year. And just those three hundred cats that first year, we reduced our kitten intake significantly. And so, we reduced our euthanasia rate for cats and other numbers. So, then we had statistics to give to the ASPCA because that gives a bunch of money. And they did. And then, from that, um, they gave us a bunch of money and, but we committed that we would be weaned off, that I think in three years. Uh, it was either two or three years. And, uh, we ended up housing the feral cat program at our Humane Society because our shelter didn't have the sterilization space. And our other two nonprofits that did low cost sterilization, their surgery services weren't big enough. And we had Texas A&amp;M run the, um, their training program at our Humane Society in Austin. So, anyway, we did it there, and they committed that they would give up the fund to replace the ASPCA money in one way. And so, it's totally sustainable now. It's probably been running five years now. Um, and that is, you know, uh, that was a really strong strategic approach. It's prove you could do something good and then get some money, give you a bunch of money, and then commit that it will be good forever. Um, it was a really good strategy. Other questions about Kwaye, uh, what is that, or anything you would get started?
So, the town that you were at, the shelter that served you, you did the three year cat. What was the size of the population, size of the town?
Uh, Austin's probably a million, too. And our shelter intake was twenty thousand animals a year. So, it was big. We had big problems. Low cost, low cost of cats. We've got a whole lot of in-house. But that's why I thought that the prevention programs are so important. And I can tell you, in practice, we don't have a big business chain, we don't know where to start. But our intake for CAPA took a sharp drop down as our population was going up. Um, and our actual intake stayed flat on shelter. So, as our population increased, our human population increased tenfold. Um, our actual intake stayed, well, it's still twenty thousand animals a year. And the for CAPA intake was a huge drop. Yes, sir?
Do I understand correctly, of your feral cat intake, your adoption, most of the only reason is that it's ten percent?
Our total, our relationship is, are you, our euthanasia rate's ten percent, or your life and age rate is ninety percent? Oh, uh, all species, dogs, cats, few, roosters, pig, everyone's own.
But the cats you took in, the feral cats you took in, what proportions were, often out, based along a few rules?
Well, this is a good time to have my discussion about feral. Uh, one of the first things I did at the shelter was we stopped labeling cats feral because they're not the cats. And how they came there, and typically, our shelters do is if they come to track, they decide they're a red off. So, we just said, they're cats. And if they're nice cats, they can color them homes. And if they were not nice cats, then we had to go another solution. So, we did not track that statistic, um, our placement of feral cats because, um, an interesting thing I thought at the time is that I didn't come from this industry. I came from the industry of making things work better. So, I would ask a lot of questions that would aggravate the people that work with them. So, I would say, well, what's feral cat? And they would say a bunch of stuff that didn't explain the real capa. So, we didn't weigh into that. But again, when we started, uh, the TNR program, one of the things that really hit me, too, as a person that was coming new to the shelter to try to figure out what's going on, is that once we got the euthanasia rate down from seventy percent to fifty percent, the dog euthanasia rate was only thirty percent, but the cat euthanasia rate was seventy percent. And that's typical shelters. They're very dog centric typically, and I'm not saying about the shelter, but they tend to be dog centric. Um, so, I decided somebody needs to be paid attention to this. And so, for like the next three years, all be breathed into these cats, all talked about these cats. And that's when we got to the TNR program, which did make last cats come into the shelter there with the euthanasia rate just one, one minute for those guys. And the other thing that I would talk about with the euthanasia rate with cats is that, you know, we could place a zillion kittens, and we would have a zillion kittens coming into the shelter. But while replacing a zillion kittens, by, what I mean by placement is we're doing the sterilization surgery, the vaccinations, and the microchips, and all the resources it takes for an animal to get adopted. While we're doing a zillion kittens, they're all having happy lives, we have less than a zillion adults that we don't have the resources for. So, we needed a point to make a big dent in having our adult population have a better outcome. We need to have WHS and a zillion kittens, even though much happiness comes from kittens. Yes, sir?
Um, just so I'm clear, hopefully, the focus of the discussion tonight is on feral cats. But in general, the success you were citing was a thing, was it primarily due to the control of feral cats? Or was it a combination of that with just general community acceptance of having feral cats sterilized?
Well, certainly both. I mean, we were pushing on that. I mean, no animals were leaving our shelters intact, which was a big change because there had been such a focus of getting rid of the shelter, we feel wasn't focused on getting rid of the shelter without cars. So, there was that. And we did have our partners providing affordable sterilization. So, we weren't working on the old population of animals getting one of those sterilized. But, you know, we had a lot of statistics in our shelter about where animals came from. And a zillion kittens come from, from free roaming cats. And so, that's where we were getting our kittens from. And so, our TNR program made a huge difference in our intake because it got to that issue of free roaming cats that left on, you know, free roaming cat raises babies in a nest, and it goes hunting, and a good Samaritan finds the babies and now they're wild babies in the shelter, and the mothers show up there hunting. And so, we really wanted to stop that cycle. But they had to get feral, oh, you've got to get the cats in homes getting fixed so that they'll contribute to the population of cats around, running around. Yes, sir?
What was low cost? What, did you have to qualify by income or?
We did none. In our free program, we didn't. So, the free program was targeted, was provided in low income neighborhoods. So, I didn't have to worry. These people weren't involved in force I can to get a free surgery, that doesn't really happen. And so, I just provided the surgeries and the four part tab, and then I didn't have to worry about rules of administrative food law. I just said, go, get it done, that's what we're working on, get it done. And then, our, pardon, vet service helping? Uh, not really. In Austin, that particular city, there's a big dividing line between people, if many of people is out. It's also a big dividing line between people of color and, and rare population. And so, there are really two veterinary clinics on the east side of town. There are four people, people come to. And they won't let them go out, but there's just two clinics that are available. But then we also have two nonprofit clinics who provide, the word that I use is affordable, so here is low cost. Is the miscore low cost means it didn't cost that much to do it. And it does cost, a lot of nonprofits do a subsidy of that donation. So, and the affordable clinics are remembering that their rates were running at a $50, $60 range. And they, neither one of those clinics did target, did, um, income qualify. But both of those were located on the east side of town as well, where we have the ongoing operation of, of, um... Yes, sir?
How did you get the word out, those groups of folks that were going, that were operating these group services, what was your best?
Um, the way we did that is utilize the public, um, public, the public health, the public service safety net. So, the area community, um, city and county, they provide free stuff to people that need help. They provide, um, the WHEC program, the Women and Children's Program, probably part of that. There's food stamps, there's free immunizations, free vaccinations for poor kids. Every community is doing a bunch of free stuff for people who need help. Get disability programs, the low income programs. Well, all people go to places to get that stuff. They go to a place to get their free clothes or food or whatever. And so, those people that run those programs became my best friends. And they would give my information about sterilization to their clients. So, we have, we took our flyers out, all their clients, have a job for humanity, see your flyers, all their clients. Everybody that was doing free stuff for poor people eventually became our best friends, and they go through our services gladly. I mean, they saw it as part of the solution to the problems in those communities. Uh, and we also use the police department, we use the garbage department. Um, anybody that was going out to touch those neighborhoods, we banned them, include our information. And that's how we did it. Cost nothing, and it was amazing.
Can I ask another question about, you have outreach team that went and that released different agencies?
Um, eventually, we did. And that was like eight years later, that's like the last two years before I left, and I finally got questioned for outreach coordinator. But a lot of that, um, because I was a person in the city who fixed other departments. I knew a lot of the departments ahead of the city, and I just asked them to help me. So, what that says is networking, networking. And networking out of the animal world. Well, I'm starting then, and people that are just crazy, they're like, ooh, why are you calling the garbage department? But the garbage department goes to that neighborhood where pibbles are chained up, and they know about this dog, and they can tell me where they are, and they can go help them. So, networking to those public health, public service entities in the community is really the key for reaching, um, your allowing populations because they're already doing it, and they will help you for free because they want to help them.
Did you provide like flyers to them or cards or something like that?
Yep, just plain old pieces of paper. Well, and you know, people like, I don't know, we had Facebook and all that. But really, the population we were trying to reach, plain old pieces of paper was good. And they would use to go to places that had posters with plain old pieces of paper to get a flyer about where they could get free immunizations. Like here in this community, um, your public health department or somebody is giving free shots to kids, to poor kids. And if those people get their shots to poor kids, we'd have those kids to take them with a piece of paper about where to get free shots from their animals and give free sterilization, we'd start building up connections to them.
Question, so, and I think that's a great idea that you're targeting that they could specifically like that. But did you bring the services to them, like with a mobile veterinary van? Or then the trouble is getting them to come to you, right? If they don't have transportation or something?
Well, we had a free clinic that we did, um, park at those clinics, at the public health clinics, in those neighborhood centers. We parked, we had a free, that's where we did our free program, is it was abandoned, it went to the community center. Uh, but our two nonprofits who provided affordable still targeted to those same populations. They were stationary clinics. And, um, I, you know, I don't want to get too far off from talking about your community. But basically, what we did is kind of used a spiral effect, where we said, let's start with the people that can go. And we got all those people attached to these clinics where they knew where they were, and then they were spread. Very soon, that was the clinic for these poor neighborhoods. The low, the too low cost clinics as well as the free clinic. And then, as time went on, we said, okay, now we're getting to the harder to serve population. And so, we need some specialty programs. And so, eventually, we started up a van program where we went to the really hard to serve neighborhoods, where people are living in shacks. And we would pick up those animals and bring them. We've got a great webinar that was done by one of my colleagues that ran one of the sterilization clinics that talks about exactly this, targeting and the different levels of customer, of kinds of people that have animals. And, you know, you can start on the outer edge, and it's a little easier to get to. And as you work in, it's going to be harder to reach, because those programs will become more expensive and more time intense. And so, about here, it can be pieces of paper given away. And over here, it might have to be a van with delivery service or something like that. If you're interested in seeing that webinar, I think it's only an hour. And it is a wonderful thing to capture exactly the issue of how do you get spade or services delivered to the people that need it? And in two hours or seven years of experience in the field of doing this, and boiled it down to an hour discussion about targeting services. Um, so if you'd like to see it, if you'd just let me know, I'll send you a link to it. Then somebody will have to send me any notes on it. They'll send me the Austin shit, it's really worth seeing, you guys. Okay, so, that's about the, that's about the stuff I know, which is fun to, to interested in it. But what I thought we would do tonight is talk a little bit about where Salem is. And is Salem how we're defining the area that we care about? If I care, just in our area of concern, is Salem, or is it...?
Mary Pope County. Mary Pope County.
So, what I thought we would do is, um, talk about where you are, what are the problems that you're experiencing, and then talk about possible solutions. In the middle of that, though, I'd like to talk about how would we evaluate possible solutions? Because there's a zillion really good, uh, solutions, and you all know them, and you can start spitting them out at you. And what the challenge I see, and what we're trying to accomplish to people who care about these animals, is, well, we, we spend a lot of time talking, arguing, and talking about what the right solution is, and we dealt with as much forward movement as we could because we don't have consensus about how to decide what is the good solution. And I'll give you an example. I had a person, a little provider from the National Office of Fines, come to Austin and tell me that if he was willing, because we have to, we, he was willing to build a shelter for cats. I would need to stop TNR and do this sterilizing of the shelter. And he, so, but, you know, how many people in this room would agree with him? So, that's a great idea. Let's get that one, go to the big shelter. So, after several hours, like convinced him that it would be filled up in about three minutes, and then we're going to this another. Started doing acreage calculations for him, how long now we left. So, we can count a lot of those solutions, but I think it's important to ask for criteria for how we're going to evaluate them. And that kind of helps us as a community stay focused on the solutions that are the most implementable, the most doable, and can get on with it, and the things that are the least doable, leave a weight, a block here, and, and resources, or whatever. So, does that sound like a discussion that you're interested in having? Okay, because I want it to be useful to y'all, wherever it comes, I mean, it's going to be useful to you. So, if it sounds good, then what I'd like to start with, we'll spend less time on this and more time on solutions. But I'd like to talk a little bit about the answer to the question, do you have feral cat problem in Salem? Or this town, or free roaming cat problem?
Cats.
Well, let's talk about, what is the problem? How are we defining it as, how do we know we have them?
Because our save rate is not ten percent, it's not eighty percent.
Yes, let's have, how do we know we have to be cats? We see them.
For friends of felines, we get as many in the summers, I'd say as many as fifty calls a day. And we just can't take it. I mean, there's so many coming at us that we can't possibly move that lead.
We would define too many cats as too much intake into the shelter.
Request.
It's the honor, request, it's the honor.
Okay?
Uh, for those of us who do track and, you know, there are those cats around, um, there's too many people out there that are, you know, that are feeding too many cats. In other words, it's not just ones coming into shelters, but I could get calls from somebody who said, last year, this mom cat was in my backyard, had a litter, now I've got, you know, plenty of cats, and I can't, and, and cats. So, just people feeding cat colonies, there's just too many.
So, is there too, too many cats that are being fed, or being down and sterilized?
And, yes, right.
And, um, lack of education about...
Right. Lack of attention. And also lack of money. Um, because I would say ninety-nine percent of the people I run into are calling, want to help to get it fixed, but they do not have the funding to, to pay for all this stuff.
I'll take after that in another way, though. Because we can say that about anything, there's not enough money for, um, passing the unit. Fixing pibbles. So, let's talk a little bit about that.
Sometimes it's like it's a last importance.
Yeah, they don't prioritize it.
Yeah, they don't prioritize.
Over other expenses, they might have, maybe, or something.
Well, I think they're doing their part, but they don't realize that there's the next step.
That's why I'm stopping the, the litters. Or it just kind of gets sidehand, you know? It starts out where they, they, there's one cat, you know? And here, here's the story, we all heard the story a million times. One cat shows up in the yard, and so, they start feeding it. But then, instead of taking the one cat, getting the next five, which they could easily afford to do. Then all of a sudden, she's under the shed, having a litter. And then, now all of a sudden, they got, you know, six or seven cats. And then, all of a sudden, they're like, well, I don't know what to do with those six or seven. And then, next year, then all those six and seven cats are having kittens. It just keeps going on. And then they get, then they call you up, you know, screaming because they're like, it's out of control. So, they don't sort of, it starts out as a drippy faucet, and they don't model sixty with drip. Now it's a full flow. You know, it's that type of thing. So, it's not, they don't get it while it's still, you know, able to be controlled and, yeah.
Okay.
And then, a lot of these litters are being socialized, probably. And so, they are turning into the not nice cats that are not available.
And so they are turning into the not nice cats that are not enough.
I just have a comment about, you know, cats. I personally have four cats, I have a fenced backyard. We have a lot, a lot of home cats in our neighborhood. My point is simply this, we have a lot of cat trafficking through our yard where cats are coming in because they like my cats. It's cat, it's, we have no dogs, it's a cat friendly yard, and they're social. And I've seen situations where I, for example, I know it's on instant, and not across the street, there, there's like a wooded area in the street, so there could be a feral cat situation there. I'm not close enough to see that. By some instances where cats are appearing in my yard, I have no idea whether they're feral or not. I mean, if they're feral, it'd be, well, I don't understand. But my point is to say, oh, I don't know if this cat, if this cat is home or it's loose. They're all lonely, go trap it. Well, it could be trapped by somebody else's.
Pet.
Cat.
Somebody else's cat. And I actually saw that happen a long time ago, there was one cat eating, and I thought, well, it's on its own or something. I turned off, three doors up across the street.
It just liked your yard better.
Yep. So that's, that's kind of a dilemma, you know?
Oh, yeah. That's why I decided if they were feral enough, if they're running around, they need to be sterilized, I don't really care. We're waiting to talk about tipping yours. Do you think we could send this over here?
Yeah, absolutely.
He's not sticking on the back end, he's got, he has a place to sit at it. I don't want to leave that. So we'll put it right there. Okay, other problems that are, those problems were version of those problems.
Well, your question was how do we know that there's a cat problem? It's because we have more cats than we can read home. And so our save rate is not 90%. That's how we know there's too many cats.
Can I catch that as the major rate, the shelters is too high?
Yeah.
Yes.
And adoption rate is steady, regardless of what FAs you make.
It's stable, year to year. There's ups and downs, but it's statistically.
Yeah, it's pretty flat.
Anything else?
Well, I can't handle.
I can't handle what?
Cannot. We can't handle all the calls that people that are, are famous that come out of traffic, we just can't, yes?
Then? What else? Then we have to argue.
My greatest concern are the fair, the calls that I can contain friends when I go out and see 20 some feral, that they can't stay, they can't be TNR.
Yeah.
That's.
And maybe they're not a golf ball.
Yeah, golf balls, yeah, because they're ferals, yeah. We can't help them, we have to hit them. So really what we need is one barn for them.
House ferals?
I want more. I want people else to also.
We have a lot of time without solutions. And this is me cheating, I'm supposed to be a good facilitator and I've done a lot of it, but I cheat sometimes because I have some real strong dots that might kill me with some of those things that I'll show you tonight. So you might. Okay, if we're on my cats, they're in unacceptable locations, people need to go away. Okay? Anything else? I have a little.
I guess I would say personally, just anecdotal stories I hear from people who either live in the country and every time they turn around, there's more cats in their yard. Or they live in an apartment complex where they see, or an office area that has a, so just anecdotally, I feel like I hear there's a lot of cats out there, just from people in conversations saying that they see them around their office, their apartment complex, their, you know, their country home, whatever. So that to me seems to have a lot.
Do you hear, and we didn't hear anybody from the city or county here, do you? Did, do you hear complaints from the Apartment Management Association or Apartment Health Services?
Here we do.
Yes, we've gotten in trouble for TNR because we've had residents whose hat, whose had bleeding hearts. And we bring cats back and then I was involved in a situation where they were being poisoned. And someone was dead in the feeding station. And I was asked to give that cat, it was upstairs.
In, in Austin, every apartment complex had a cat problem. And I asked that one specifically because this is a really easy thing to tackle because you can go to the apartment complex, there they are. And so you can get on top of it real quickly if you can get them invited to. I did invite them to a meeting like this and in three hours, they walked out, they were TNR.
We don't have, we don't have.
Yeah, well, we might have got on our solution list because maybe we need to get them invited and just talking with them and get them to seeing 20 in our association to their complex.
And the complaint is, is they use the barb just as a litter box for the tenants, open their window, it smells, but it doesn't just maintain the humidity you've done, just don't say a few other cats come in, so.
Yeah, I mean, problem.
Yeah.
But there are solutions to it. Yes, sir?
Again, I, I don't have much background, but I like to address mother counties. I know, like for example, the two counties that we're concerned about is very agricultural, you have, you know, farming. So what I wonder a lot of barrier in like this, this program is like, are there a lot of farmers who in a sense, they have their barn cats and they could care less about controlling them just, that, I mean, in other words, they could say, hey, we'll do this all for free. They don't, they don't want to hear that. They, their, their attitude is let, let them go.
Well, let me ask you this, sometimes, do you, do you have, do you have cat problems in your rural areas? Typically, you don't because coyotes eat them.
That's so, that's true. I'm, I live on a 200 acre ridge and the neighbor had a cat population explosion and they disappeared. And it wasn't because she took the haul to the shelter. And I've had, and I've had a couple of.
Our placements, because our placements are just guiding.
Yeah, our feral cats don't stay.
So typically you don't have them. So if you're hearing something specific from your rural areas, that's a real specific thing that we would want to explore. Because typically the natural predators that are out there, hawks, coyotes, owls, cows, those cats.
As soon as she didn't have trees, I mean, I think the trees protect her cats and they, I mean, that's, the cats go, oh, if the cats, I have a 12 year old who did, I lost four cats within six months of my house from my, I have a 21 year old that roams. And I know she was just on two, we got a tree.
Yeah, so.
You know, well, I lived in Turner and that's when I started doing the TNR. The population of people is 1,900 and the population of ferals is over 600. I mean, it's huge, you know? My husband, a police officer, would drive around at night and the cats would be jumping in and out of the garden.
So, yeah. Is that in the urbanized part of that, even if it's only 1,900, where are those cats coming?
They're actually in the town, we have two mills and in those mills, the cats are.
Yes, and that's a different thing than if somebody has a ranch, 200 acres. The coyotes are going to eat those cats.
We, and I, I don't, I don't mean to be offend, offend anybody, but I've seen feral cats on our property have litters and those litters are picked off. So they may be reproducing, but the litters are not surviving. And so I, before I can even trap them and bring them in, they're gone. And that's on, that's in a big natural area and they just fit into the, not very well into the ecosystem.
But, but a small, a small town, and that's a real specific thing, like the female, the real specific, um. Yeah, so the thing that's there is food that is making the cats come to get them. Other problems?
Just to give a little perspective, I've just gone to a wonderful fundraiser hosted by the Land Community Society. And there are staff here to draw up and cite the source. At that fundraiser, we accounted for the number of unclaimed free roaming cats in the greater Salem area, which is Old, and Mary County, our two counties, 70,000. There are 90,000 cats, they are, that are cats that are.
That are owned and they're outside.
We're a community, Salem on Wikipedia is just under 160,000 people, so there's 160,000 humans in this community. Our two counties is pushing 400 cats. I don't even fathom what you do with 70,000 free roaming cats.
And they're out there.
That's why I'm here. That's why I'm here. Because you could find all the farms and all the homes and all the wonderful things that Salem friends and others do.
Yeah. Well, I'm trying not to jump to the conclusion because I do want us to kind of talk through some possible solutions, but population control, I know that they do. Yes, sir?
It seems like the piece that's not being mentioned here, we're concerned about kitties. I've had kitties for 60 years. But, you know, if you look at the estimates that are coming out of the number of birds and small mammals and reptiles that are eaten by free roaming cats, yes? So I think double the notion that we have a cat problem is much as a problem of community cats in all of these kinds of, from all these kinds of indicators, but with 70,000 free roaming cats out here, maybe bird population and small mammal populations and whatnot, I think that's, that's a really good reason to do something that's very effective that is made cats and also gives past problem of ecological.
And that's what I was going to ask you, that is because there should be some concern about the environment at home. The days are long, I think the environment, the balance of the ecosystems.
You know, I'm going to share this a couple of years back, we visited my sister in law in Winnipeg. And they have some very tough regulations, for example, you can't own a pit bull. This, this is illegal, you can't have a pit bull. Cats are not allowed to roam. You have to keep your cats in the house. Part of my friends, but basically they're up to their ass and rabbits.
Dogs.
A lot of rabbits. And my, my sister in law has seen, for example, too, they have a lot of crows. I don't know what crows do to the other birds, but she's actually seen crows attack the rabbits at least as part of the control. So my point is, it's good intention, you are, you start trying to mess sometimes with basically the chain of being or the biological controls and you push down on one thing and another problem.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, and we should be concerned about the impact that we humans are having by what we're allowing to happen with these animals on the ecosystem environment around us.
Yeah, one of the things I was going to say, though, is I come from the east coast where I lived in a county that didn't, again, allow free roaming cats. But, and when we say free roaming, it also includes only local. And, and the thing is, what I found here, I lived here, is people here have a very different attitude. So I, I think, you know, the point is, is a lot of these cats that are roaming around are only cats. So they're just not kept indoors. Doesn't mean all these cats are going around and, you know, killing birds or lizards or whatever are actually multiplying. A lot of them are only cats. So they're, you know, it's, it's to try and get such, you know, this, you know, sociologically, this, this group of people that keep cats indoors would be, they would much better.
I got that one on the list, free roaming only cats. And, you know, I'll, I'll press you guys throughout the night on the, not just the vocabulary, but the thinking about feral versus home. It really doesn't matter, they're just cats. And they're cats that unless we know they're sterilized are making more cats. And so it doesn't really matter what their status is in the universe. And that, I'm making that point, when you start talking about specific solutions, you get into some real ditty gritty that that philosophy starts to matter. Like, one of the questions we had in our TNR program was, were we going to irritate 100% of the cats? And I said, yes. And then other people said, ooh, what is that all about? And I said, well, they should have already been sterilized, that's why they're outside, they wouldn't have to take care. So we did sterilize 100% of them. And it's one of the ways that you keep people from sneaking home cats into a free TNR program. Usually want it to be targeted, the cats are targeted. But we did get a few complaints from people who ended up with their beautiful, it's like these cats having fun here. But we also started making a culture change in our community with the idea that they're free roaming, they're, they're in the public space or they're in my yard and that's your man. If it loses its ear, that's a minor price to pay. It could have been a roadblock, eaten by coyotes, eaten by hawk. So anyway, I'm going to press you on those words. Okay, any other problems we have to talk about?
Did you see any increase in identification on your indoor outdoor cats?
Well, at the same time, with other prevention programs that we didn't, that we had going, that I didn't talk about because it wasn't sterilization related, is we had a microchip program you wouldn't believe. And we were microchipping 20,000 animals a year. And we did a tagging program as well, where we were pushing zillions of free tags out into the community. So our re-clean rate for cats was going up at the same time that our intake was coming down. We were pushing identification. Okay, any other problems that we have to talk about? Yes, sir? Intact tongues, it's happening, all damage. It's red.
Do you read by the, I'm not listening to people do.
In fact, cats, males that have not been castrated have a much higher level of aggression. A lot of times they'll tap on animals, especially cats.
Okay, any others that we have to talk about?
No, I'm here. And very many communities that deal with no regulations on cat area, they're treated as a pest animal. And that's another really big issue that we have here.
Cats are pets?
They are, like if you call the police department, animal control, fish and wildlife, no one will deal with them.
Right, there's no agency that will touch a cat.
Well, yeah, exactly, laws are requiring to be on leash or on property, cats are not. There's no, no legal. That's, that's what's difficult. You said the cat. No, I mean, I. Okay, unless there's anything that's just really pressing here, is the biggest problem of the world, we have to talk about it. And I'm going to stop with problems. So is this good? Or is there really a pressing problem? Then what I'd like to do, and there's a bunch of these, and this is giddy tricky, is I would like to prioritize these problems. Because we're going to talk about solutions and I don't want to talk about a zillion solutions for every single thing. Because if we do that, we won't do any of them, right? So what I'd like to do is prioritize all these problems so that then we'll have our focus on the top tip of the iceberg, top two or three problems. And then we'll move on to talk about solutions. But our solutions will be focused on those big things that we are having as a big problem. Now typically, how I do this is with dots. Everybody has some dots and they can put their dots on there. There's a bunch of you, so I'm not sure what's going to happen with my dog. Unless. Could you guys, could you do that? If you were in groups, could you spin your dots as a group?
Yes, ma'am. May I suggest that we cut off these, the groups here in the little groups? So WHS is in a whole group, but Salem, Salem kind of.
Well, I think you'd get more agreement on dots if you kept the, the small groups.
If you, and I'll tell you, if we could do the dot thing, you will just agree to go quickly, put your dots on and go back to your seat. quickly, put your dots on, and go back to your seat. It will cause some chaos, but that's okay, I think, because we do our chaos quickly.
I think we can do it.
So can you do your chaos quickly?
Yeah.
All right. And now we're going to try to steer out what we care about the most. And these dots got merged.
Hard to tell.
It is hard to tell. Look. There's that one. And I'm going to make this be two. And I'm going to make this be a. And we got them. Okay. So those are the ones I'm circling. Does anybody have any hard thoughts with that? Okay. Good. So those, one, two, three, four, five, are what we think are the ones that are important issues that we're seeing in the community. And I'll bring this up, Ray, as we're talking about it, Ray's right about what he told me, because these are really symptoms of the root problem. And Ray said, why can't we just get to the root problem? And I said, because people like to talk about symptoms. So if we, um, but he's right, these are indicators of a problem in the community. And they're symptoms. But if we address these symptoms, then the root problem of too many free roaming cats and all impacts that they cause will be changed. So those are those five problems, or five symptoms, five indicators of the community that we're going to talk about solutions and what we see as potential solutions. Before we do that, though, I'm going to take a few minutes to talk about how we evaluate whether a solution is a good idea or not a very good. The reason why I want to talk about that is that, um, what, from my professional experience, what gets in the way of stuff getting done is a whole bunch of good ideas that people have to agree on. And so we try to do a whole bunch of things, and we spread our resources, and we're not very focused, and we're not very good at any one of them. And then things just get balled up, and there's not enough resources to perform. And that's just my own personal perspective on change management. I like to take one big thing, and let's go get that done. And then we come down to the next layer, the iceberg, and take a look at that. What I think helps us do that is to understand how we're going to decide if something is a good idea. I might think something is a good idea because it has the color yellow in it, because I like that. Jeanne might think, or Jeanne might think it's a good idea because it has the color red, she likes red. And then we can spend hours talking about those two colors for the rest of the fall season. So I want to talk pretty quickly about how we decide, is how we evaluate whether something is a good idea for us to report on these issues. So what are your thoughts on that? So I'll give you a hint at one of them. And this is always my topic. Is any solutions that we come up with have to be cost-effective, right? Is it not? Right? I'm not bad if you build a bunch of shelters. Well, yeah, if you got a zillion dollars, that's great. But if you don't have a zillion dollars, that's not going to be a real solution. So it needs to be cost-effective. What's your other big ticket things that has to be? I've been a kid once, I'm sorry, I'm not. Y'all thinking? If I came up with a solution and said, I'm going to poison all these cats, then that, you think that would be good?
Right.
But it's not.
Need the resources.
So one of them is going to be. Uh, yeah. Well, we're looking at criteria for doing it, so if we pick a solution, we have to give them resources. Ray?
So I think socially acceptable as well. It seems like we don't have community behind you, or something you're going to do is going to fail.
We need. Oh, yeah, support. Okay?
Sustainable.
What's that mean?
Means you can, means your, your thirty-five-hundred spenders a year is doing, you know, you can sustain that.
Okay. I just wanted to ask if you use that word, because I don't know that in environmentally green.
That you can, that you can, whatever program you come up with that's effective, you can keep doing it.
Okay. Is there any other, we don't need a whole lot of these. We need the big ticket things that you're going to look at and say, that's the stupidest idea I've ever had in my mind, I mean, whatever part of this film. The stupidest idea I ever heard, because it is not sustainable, it's not fair.
I have a question, I don't know if that's covered in any of this, but whatever program you're going to choose, or like, you need to get volume from what you want to do. I don't know if that's covered under.
That's socially acceptable. Community volume.
It's engaging.
What did you say there?
I said engaging, and that seems like what Paul was saying. It engages the community.
It engages, but you know, we're not like, so. Well, I see the point. I think socially acceptable probably is that, but.
Let me take.
There's none anyway.
I'll just make this point, I mean, again, I'm not working in the field of animals, I'm just interested in party. But I, I've met people, for example, in a nutshell, you could offer them to have their animals spayed for free. They have a personal issue about spaying the animal, they feel like you're demating that animal. And since you're in Austin, you have minorities, I run into this, for example, like with African-Americans who, you know, maybe it's because of what happened in their history or whatever, that they just don't like the idea of messing with the animal, that they feel it takes something away from the animal.
There certainly are cultural barriers to spaying.
So that's my point, though. So my point is, yes, a spay neuter program, it could be free, but you still got to address that, that people are resisting it because of those barriers, and that's why we have that.
Maybe I missed it, but it seems to me that we should be concerned not only in all those things, but what about the cat? I mean, are we doing, I mean, you like yellow and she likes red, but my question is, which is the best thing for the animal itself? You know, you're going to do lots of animals, so there's going to be, you have to do what's best for the animal, I don't think they do want to make, did they make any consideration of what is the best thing we can do for the animals in general?
Is that humane?
Does that be an implication?
I, I'm always reluctant to use the word humane, because everybody has a different definition of what that means. Like, is it humane for cats to live outside up here when it snows? Is it humane for cats to live outside in Austin where it's fine when they really can use hands? So you get into a lot of debates by that, but I think the concept here is that nobody wants to see a solution come to the forefront as solutions that we want to work on, that's not doing good things for animals. Right? So we can agree that for tonight, humane means we don't want to do bad things to animals. Yes, ma'am?
This bit, though, under socially acceptable, but before I came, I was reading about the feral freedom program in Jacksonville. And something that disturbed me reading about that was how they kept talking about how they kind of, when people brought cats into shelter, they didn't tell them that this was a possibility, and it seemed like they were kind of covering up what they were doing because they didn't want to get engaged in a conversation with people bringing in the animals.
Transparency.
Yeah, transparency, being out of court. Okay. I have a big problem with hiding what you're doing.
Yes.
Okay.
And I have that expectation. I think that's a really good one. But I don't want to get too many of these, because the bottom line is, when you, when humans, not you personally, when humans evaluate things, they only use three. I've done a study on it.
Something that, and I don't know how to put it, but with a quick return, something that starts working immediately.
That falls under.
Is that measurable results, maybe? I think I'm going to forget if it's cost-effective.
Cost-effective.
Well, I'd add one more, but really, you won't get the.
Effective.
All right, I'll put it next to the.
Produces desirable results.
That is sort of related to measurable.
Yes, you know, in the animal shelter, we, they have a little rating system of one to seven to rate adoptability, and don't, it doesn't matter how it all works, but we had a scale of one to seven, nobody ever used more than three numbers. Like, my numbers I used were five, six, and seven, and somebody else used four, five, and six. We only ever used three numbers. And then we all got to know each other's numbers, like, your four was equivalent of my five. And so, but it did the job, it was a communication system. So I can write these down, but when I tell you, all right, when we talk about solutions, I want you to evaluate each solution based on these, you're only going to use three. Um, okay. So can we say that as we talk about solutions, we're going to use this for context of what, what makes a good idea? All right, we use the color yellow, we'll use the purple, the color red. We, these things represent what we think is a good idea. All right? Okay.
Can I give you a suggestion?
Yes.
If we took the humane part out and just gave that our umbrella, because we're not going to.
Ever accept something.
Any day that humane, I think we could strike that one because it's just going to be.
Given.
A given, yeah. Okay.
An accident.
Yeah.
Is there a given?
Now it's going to look good. We don't care.
Okay.
We don't have insurance.
So now, what we want to talk about is the rest of the problems have gone away, we dealt with some of the day. We're going to put them on a list, and some of the day I'm going to come back and meet with you, and all these things are solved, and we'll talk about the others, okay? So for now, what I want you to think about is these things. It doesn't really matter what order they are, and except that, um. Want you to think about these, just these five things. Can you do that without me taking the others away? Okay. Think about those five things, and let's talk about now, what are the specific, um, solutions for solving those problems? Yes, sir?
Just have an observation, the euthanasia rate being too high, and the shelter intake too high, I mean, in effect, it's like causing that.
Yes.
Because you're taking too many in, that's why the euthanasia, so they're really tied together.
Yes.
Strongly correlated.
They are.
Separate entity.
Yes, ma'am?
I think it's separate entities. Euthanasia rate in the shelter was geared at the shelter that does euthanasias, and intake too high was geared at a no-kill.
Correct.
So, so, I mean, they are, but they aren't.
Well, let me say, I didn't capture it, so let me talk about that for just a second, because I want to know, because it was cheesy. Um, I put a shelter intake, but overall, intake is too high. Whether these cats are willing to, your euthanate, your shelter that's required in the euthanasia, or your shelter that's limited to intake, it doesn't, or your rescue group that does euthanasia, or your rescue group that does euthanasia. Isn't it true that just.
Intake is too high.
Yeah, it's too high.
Yes.
So let's change that one, and say intake is too high. And you are right, they are related, but I talked to lots of animal welfare folks, and I can tell you, after many years of duty, we love to talk about euthanasia, a lot more than we love to talk about intake. And so it's important to keep it separate, so people who really want to talk about euthanasia can do it, about intake can do it. Okay. Where was I? Yes?
I was just going to say that those two things are caused by the too many requests for help. I mean, the fact that there's so many animals in the community that need help are what causes the other two to happen.
Well, I'll disagree with you a little bit. Those two things are caused because there are too many cats.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, uh, there's too many cats, right? What's the cause of it?
Too many cats.
That's the only one that's not causing the too many cats. That is the cause. So all those things, it's caused by that.
Right.
All right. Yes, ma'am?
So the lack of education should be the double thing.
Yeah, get involved. I think so, too, because you've been, your intake down, and your too many requests for help, so you can tell people this is what you want to go after, and you can do, because there's a lot out there. And I have helped a lot of people with that, actually, to leave my home.
Okay.
A lot, you didn't.
Yes. Okay. So let's start to talk about, um, uh, solutions. And there's about fifty thousand of them. And I'm not going to just talk about fifty thousand, because then we have to eight-thirties, and we're only going to implement freedom, because humans do have to be free. So we do want to get to the big ticket things. We do want to get to the things that we can go out and do, and I don't mean to diminish the small ticket things, because they all make a difference, but, um, so I'm just warning you, I'm not going to let us raise our own solutions for two hours. I'm going to let us raise our own solutions for a little while. All right. So we're focusing on just those five, not on the other things, just our top five that we picked. What do we envision as solutions?
Yes, on education, we have to, I don't know if you can do a video, but maybe flyers to manufactured home parks, to apartment complexes, to any neighborhoods that have,
Okay, so we target information to these, to problem areas. Yes, sir?
Can I add, to target information to problem areas and dealerships there? Or is that another one?
Oh, not just to the people who live there, but to someone who could actually take action there.
We're not going to reach eighty thousand people.
Well, I think that's a methodology for doing this.
That's part of how, that's part of the target.
That's, that's the methodology for doing this. I'll, I'll write that down so you don't forget it, but, yeah, you're not going to go out and find every one of these people. You're going to get those garnishmen and all those people on board, just tell them you have to get them to do it for you.
Shouldn't those informational materials be bilingual, at least for our community?
That's part of the strategy.
Is that part, okay.
That's, that's a whole other night, I think. You're right, because that's.
Okay. Other ideas for solutions? Jane?
I think you pointed out in your area that networking was a major factor of your success, and so engaging municipalities, just networking with other agencies. You know, the, the fact that we don't have any city representatives or county representatives here tonight is, is an indication that there's a gap that needs to be filled.
Jane, what are you doing there? Alena?
Okay, collaboration. Yes.
Have you ever made another of any, just a short way to say this from here? Do you guys have, like, an official collaboration here in this community? Baby one? Good, good. Get any of those fish marks, because I do have them. Have for tonight. Have a good night. I have, um... If we build a strong collaboration, then we may be able to get some of the big boys like the ASPCA to give us money or something. Yeah, many of them have that, right? Yep. You can't get money, well, but collaboration is such a big thing now, um, in animal welfare, the big nonprofits, they want to see collaborative, if you put collaboration in it, you'll get money. My little band group, they're getting grants right now, so we started a little baby collaboration. Okay, and what's happening with your TNR program? So you have one, and we're happy about that, just need to write down anything about that.
Or that, or me.
Yeah. Is it any other things?
Aren't we gonna have to do more?
Needs invigoration.
Needs what?
Invigoration.
Take those from the word.
We, we have a TNR community, we have feral cat question, we have individuals, we have Salem Friends and Felines, we have a lot of groups and individuals working on TNR, but it's not enough yet because of what they set up there of resources and, and people to do the work.
And is your TNR, I'm sorry, is your TNR targeted right now?
We got a grant that has smart share lease with two U of R to target the 97305 Z code area, and we use that up past July, and that was on their criteria that they wanted us to target a specific area.
Well, that's my answer to the question, is that they're, they're gonna be asking that because that's how you make the numbers make sense. You do 1,000 surgeries, but if you aren't doing the right 1,000 surgeries, you're not going to impact this, can I repeat, you're not gonna impact your shelter intake.
So I would say that something on, part of that solution, or maybe a method, is gonna be, um, understanding where the kittens are coming from. Figure it out. Understand, identify where the kittens are coming from.
Do you guys need this to hear me?
You know, it doesn't seem to be working much anyway. Sorry about that.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a comment, for the TNR program, I think in Salem, the community, just what I've observed, much to my dismay, of course, is that most people would like to see the "our" part go away. It's like, don't bring them back to our neighborhood. And that's what I see, I mean, we, I have trapped and neutered poodles or animals in our neighborhood and stuff, but really what people want to see is it disappear, they don't want them in the neighborhood. So get the community behind that.
So is that a issue, a big problem that we need to capture is the return part of TNR?
Yeah.
I, I think community education is really lacking in that area.
Well, the solutions to the return part are not just education.
Well, whatever.
There are other strategies for making those cats disappear while they still live there, but, do you guys see your cats, your TNR cats? Here we will see. So I'm gonna capture them. I'll give you one.
Thank you.
Feeding people, because people notice cats are feeding. Feeding can also solve problems, because it means cats will go to there instead of feeding over here where they're following. So in the return part, we have to think about tools for disappearing the cats.
Who's in the backyard? Who's in the backyard?
They're all feeding. I mean, feeding isn't always the right thing to do. Everybody does that since, like, 100 days. Okay. Other solutions for those questions?
You know, you were saying that feeding is not the right thing to do?
I'm saying sometimes it's not.
Why?
I'll tell you a really great story about feeding. I had five cats, I didn't personally have, but in my, in Austin, there were five cats, they were having happy little cat lives, living in the backyards of 10 houses, seven houses, and everybody was happy with the five cats, because the five cats would just show up on their little onesie lives, and people were feeding them. And then one of my feral cat people saw the cats, and she started feeding the cats, and she started feeding the cats, she couldn't go, and those backyards could feed them, because she didn't live there, so she started feeding them at the stock, the quick store, you know, I mean, the mini mart, she started feeding them there. And so now, all five cats showing up at the same time, feeding them, they get their food in the parking lot where they could get run over, and now the store owner says, you can't feed those cats, she said, those cats need to go away, those cats need to get out of my parking lot, which then, the feral cat person had come, get a meeting with me, and is sitting in my office crying, because she named them, and she's feeding them three times a day, and they can no longer stay in a neighborhood that they've been living in for years. So she went, knocked on all 10 doors for people that were feeding them, and they said, oh, no, that's not my cat, I'm not gonna take it. So she created that problem for cats, that if she would have just quietly cut them, let her stay alive, put them back, and let them go back to eating however they were eating, those cats could have been happy in the neighborhood, and the neighborhood was still happy with the cats, so we had to figure out what they had to do with these cats that weren't nice, I mean, they weren't tame. So that is a situation where feeding caused the problem in the neighborhood, and caused, the wrong cause, I was getting from that neighborhood, was caused by feeding. Now, I had a grocery store that was on the front end road to freeway, and those cats ate at a dumpster that was real close to the front end road, or close to the parking lot, and so those cats were real pain, because they were eating from the dumpster. So in that situation, we did send one of our TNR people to feed them every day in the woods that were right behind the H and P, so in that case, feeding caused the cats to go someplace else that was not a problem, and it disappeared there. So feeding is a tool to go get to what you're trying to get to, and that's why I wanted us to talk about, what are the, how do we evaluate solutions? Because nothing on the solution, on the evaluate solution says we're gonna make sure the cats have enough to eat, and this is really hard, this is a really hard topic for people that do TNR, because they love their cats, and they give them names, and they call them Spotty and Freddie and stuff like that, and they want to feed them. Yes, ma'am.
Question of our TNR program, we kind of revamped it last summer to include what we do is just make sure there's a caregiver, not one of us, but like what you said about the houses that were feeding them, in our case, that would be, that's okay, because those people are dedicated to bringing food out for those cats, and we know that they are, so we would TNR them back, but we wouldn't actively feed them.
Well, and I've had many discussions, you guys don't throw things at me, but if we're gonna let them be wild animals, let them be wild animals, unless the feeding, unless the feeding solves the problem. The other thing that feeding does, um, is that it sucks the life out of your resources, right? Because every 50 cats you spay and neuter, now somebody's gonna feed those cats, and those somebodies are no longer trapping and transporting and fostering babies and all the other things. So, so I know what happens, and I've spent many, many hours talking with my TNR people in Austin, many, many hours, and, um, we finally got to a place where we came to consensus that we would not feed or cause a problem, because the animal control, that would be me, would have to go pick those cats up in the moment, and, um, we can be at peace there. And then if they overextended themselves by feeding too much and not trapping enough, then I would just give them evil eyes, and we're not focused on the prize here, and the prize is decreasing population. So anyway, that's my lucky.
Yeah, and what if you use the community as your, like, what I'm saying is, the people in the houses are feeding them, those aren't the trapping people, it's the community. So we're providing the TNR, and we know that the community's taking care of feeding.
I think that's fine, I just don't think it's a requirement. Well, personally, I just don't think feeding them is a requirement, and, but I have never had anybody bring me a dead feral cat, and every feral cat that'd be trapped, not every one, 99% of the feral cats that are trapped and sterilized are not starving. Right? They're eating raw food, that's the other thing, I feed my cats and my dog raw food, I make myself, and then I have these feral cat trackers that will feed them pedigree, and like, they can just eat mice and have a much healthier diet than what you're feeding them. So anyway, I just, it's, I think that feeding has to be viewed as a tool, and certainly if you have cats that are already being fed by a household, and you're helping out and spaying neuter, then that's great. What I think is a challenge and completely resources is when you say we're not going to, to TNR, if there's not spending care for them, then you're shutting down your own program, and you're not keeping your eye on the prize, which is decreasing population. Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm hearing that the solution to this could be that if you trap and bring to a clinic for spay and neuter, a cat that appears to be in reasonably good health, and you treat it, and you put it back, it's probably going to remain in reasonably good health. Better, because you've just sterilized it and vaccinated it.
Yep, took its, eaten by a dog or over by a car, or...
Because it's been utilizing whatever resources are available in that community, whether it's a homeowner's food, or the mouse population, um, it's utilizing those resources, and now it's gonna continue to utilize those resources without reproducing and stressing the resources.
Right, and, and we didn't, we didn't really get to this, but the, the, the big solution, we put in all cats, is population control. That's the deal, that's the target, that's the prize, and these things are how we do that, so this is the root, uh, solution. The root problem is there's too many prewommy cats, the root, and they're causing all these goofy things to happen, and the root solution is population control. These are ways to be, going to control that with doing that. So if you buy this, if everybody in the room says, I adopt this as my mantra, and you start making your decisions around this, you'll make different decisions, because this is what we're trying to accomplish. We're not trying to be nice to them, name them, have families for them, and we go off down little side trails, and, um, I think you have to do humane things, so if they come in and you're gonna do TNR, and they have an access, you need to make a decision about whether you're gonna provide some antibiotics, or whether you're gonna euthanize them, because you don't want to send it back, have this lady getting greedy and fall off, so you have to make some decisions about some of that stuff. I think we have to keep our eye on the prize if we want to have a really effective TNR program.
I was just gonna, um, bring up a, a point from my own area that I live in, um, when people were talking about putting cats back out that don't have, you know, a formal caregiver. What happened where I live, it's just, you know, suburban area here in Salem, is I, because I'm active in my community, and I know people throughout, you know, several streets away, which a lot of people don't know, but anyway, there was, there was several stray cats, and sort of over the past year, ensuing conversations, finding out that there's multiple people feeding these, these cats, because one thing here in Salem is people do leave food out for both their cats and their dogs, and a lot of cats that used to be drawn here, so for people who are sort of hung up on this making sure that cat is fed situation, I can tell you just from my area, that not one of these cats is gonna go without, without food, because there's so many people that leave food out here alone.
The other, the other thought with feeding is that a colony, you have to maintain its generalization status, and once you start feeding them, it just gets harder to track them, because they're not excited about that food, because they get it every day, so, so anyway, I don't mean to digress from that, but I think that, even while you're feeding, has to be looked at strategically as a tool to accomplish the goal, and this is what the goal is, and not be looked at as some other thing that you're doing for other reasons, and that's really hard to swallow, it's really hard to, for cat people that are involved in touching these animals and bringing them in, it's hard to buy that up. Ray?
Let's go back to the fresh meat diet.
Ray?
The estimates are out there from Smithsonian Biological Institute, 1.4 billion to 3.7 billion birds killed by cats in the world, so that fresh meat diet sounds so innocuous, it sounds so helpful to cats, it's really hard on a whole lot of native bird species, and the estimates were mammals, which is almost impossible to make, I think, without good science. So...
True.
These free roaming cats are never taken off. True, it's not just a matter of they're out there approaching blindly and fostering their own health through breeding, fresh meat.
True, but feeding them doesn't make them stop eating fresh meat.
All, all the birds that get killed in my neighborhood are by owned cats, they're very well fed, they just kill them anyway.
So the whole, you know, this is, this is my take on it, and I'm here to talk about your community, but, is, it's about population control, we cannot wind back the clock, there's no solution to wind back the clock and make all those cats get disappeared, so the best that we can do, in my professional experience, is to put programs in place that stop the pyramid from happening, and everybody's seen the pyramid, where, so that's the best that we can do, and, you know, they're, they're not gonna die out, they're not going to, like, get disappeared, because they're just sterilized, and they're gonna stay there until something heals them or whatever, and, um, and Ray and I talked about this a little bit, I'm a big believer in TNR for this reason, I read all the stuff about what they eat, what they don't eat, what they kill, what they don't kill, and all that, but at the end of the day, this is what I, I was responsible for doing, was controlling the population, and the most cost-effective way for me to do that was TNR, and the reason that was more cost-effective is a zillion people would volunteer to help me. We had 100 trackers in Austin. If I called a meeting like this, and just the trackers, 85 people would show up, and the other 15 would just go meetings. So that's, you know, we said, here's these free resources, go fetch me some cats, so if I said, here's some resources, we're gonna euthanize on these cats, no, nobody would be interested. And so at the end of the day, that's the end of the discussion when it comes down to, um, should we try to disappear them out of the community, or should we try to control the pyramid, make it not keep exploding? There's no way to disappear them, it's gonna be cost-effective.
Well, it is what I know, in a sense, is that, yes, the, the real solution is population control, but then you want to try to micromanage that, like you said earlier, it's not an issue in these rural areas like the cattle population, because you have natural predators, but I live back east, this thing about the birds, I had a bird beater out there, and I had carniels and mourning doves, and every other day, a hog was coming in and picking off a mourning dove, you know, and, so even if I love the birds, I mean, I, I just accept the fact, that's, that's nature, that's life, that, that's what it is, uh, and, you know, getting back to Winifred, they have all these controls, cats cannot be free roaming, and what he had is a secret deal, because people start having mice problems in their yards, and they, they get cats, it packs, they say, we'll let this cat, we'll let this cat roam and clean up our, our alley.
Can you?
In addressing the, the cat and the bird problem, um, I totally agree with you, we can't roll back the clock, and it, and I, I keep coming back to how we try to control coyotes, and if we, we're always gonna have some cats in the area, and, and like with coyotes, if you wipe out all the coyotes in an area, in two or three years, you have more coyotes than you wiped out two or three years ago, because the resources expand, and they look, and it looks very inviting, so coyotes move into that area, have plenty of resources, have high litters, have high survival rates, and bam, you've got more coyotes than you started with. There's a combination of, um, in terms of, of working with the birds, population control on the cats, so that they stop overpopulating an area, focusing the populations, like you're saying, if they're in the wrong place, focus them, be able to move the cats into areas, and, and doing some habitat preservation for the birds, um, we've impacted the bird population more than any single cat, so we don't have feral cat populations where the natural areas are supporting natural systems, and a lot of diversity in the bird populations, so I think there's gotta be, you know, there's... you know, there's so many aspects to this, and we can't just say that it's just the cats, but we can control the population, target them, and know that there are most different areas where we have also massively impacted the bird diversity and, and numbers.
And, I don't know. That's the conclusion I got to, and I had my bird people, my cat people in a room like this for many hours together. The conclusion I got to was, it didn't really matter, because they're out there anyway, and no one's going to go fetch them all up. There's none vacuum cleaner to suck them all up, except myself, so. Let's get practical about it. And in my opinion, what was practical was having a bunch of people that work for me for free go fetch them up, so we can take it apart. Jay.
Uh, just to kind of marry your idea with, with Ray's about birds. You said that feeding is a tool, and I've, I've read studies that suggest that, you know, wildlife predation is higher where there is a feeding station. So if you're putting your feeding station in an area where they're not going to be catching a lot of wildlife and birds, you can also help, you know, protect the wildlife.
So, what will happen with feeding stations is they will attract other animals.
Yeah.
And those other animals are going to eat each other. And so, and I'll give you a really good example of this. I had some coyotes. And we had a coyote control, urban coyote control program, where we only eliminated an alpha coyote that was approaching into human spaces. So if it came on my deck to eat my cat, though I left outside, or eat my dog, then we considered that coyote a problem, because it was willing to come into a human space. But if it ate my dog out of the regalia, my bad, I left the dog out there. So that's what we did. And so I had a neighborhood where I got some coyotes that were just out of control. And the whole family was camping out on the deck. And, and tracking that down, the biologist over, the wildlife biologist over in Salem, and there's, there's cats, 100%. Dog, cat, cats. So then I have the, my feral cat people, and I have a feral cat trapper that was leaving big piles of food out for a colony that was living in that regalia. And, um, so I said, "That's great, you're creating a cat buffet." So because it's going to draw all the cats to one place, and the coyotes are just going to sit there and wait for cats and eat them up, because they need their cat food too. So, feeding, you know, when we muck in the world, whether it's with our bird feeders, or our cat feeders, or whatever, when we muck in the world, we're creating muckiness in the world around us. And my approach to TNR, um, was to try to create the least possible muckiness in the environment. And just accept that some humans, the ferals, whoever screwed this up by letting cats run around. And the best I can do is population control. And be as hands-off as possible to all the animals. And, um, it, it worked in my community. I didn't get complaints about the cats. It worked in my community. So, we really got no track from our solution. So, we were talking specifically about things that we would like to see changed, and things that we need to add, or do, or improve in Salem. Because we've now adopted this as, as the prize, right? Like collectively tonight, we said, "This is the prize." And we're all shooting the arrows at it. And any other arrows that we need to be shooting at, addressing those five problems, that we, we just decided the root solution was population control. And when I check the settings, it can be really groovy, because I'm going to say, "The root solution is population control." It's going to be really good. Other things that you'd like to see changed here in Salem, other programs you think we need to have, or improvements to your TNR program? Do you need to have more TNR? Yeah.
We don't have 100 trappers here.
We got a million.
We do not.
Well, if you say you want to have more TNR, do you need more money for the procedures?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you need, and you need more trappers, more cat trappers?
Yeah.
And do you need more, um, volunteers, do you need socialization?
Yes.
Foster models? Yep.
Do you want, yeah. And we need more doctors in Salem.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
She said more doctors.
More doctors.
Okay. And do you need fosters for, um, injured, sick, and all that? Do you guys do that?
Mm-hmm.
So if they have a broken leg, you fix a broken leg, then you need somebody to do it. So if you get all those things, then your TNR will be perfect.
Oh, what I'm not saying on there is capacity.
Do you guys have capacity?
And now, so I just say capacity. I took, I'll took eight, 19 cats to a trailer park, sending out the feral cat population demo. I had seven people come up to me because their cats were missed. So I told all of them about the line of humane's $5 feral that they're doing right now. They all called me back, and with all in the same day, they're booked till next month.
So you need more surgery capacity? But let me ask you, do you need more surgery capacity in general?
No, we need more dollars to do the surgeries.
Yeah.
We could do more, we just don't have the money to do them. Yeah, it's the free, it's, it's the free surgeries that would get them responsibility, and so.
So we pushed it out till February, until we had fundraisers this week, so.
And you knew what happened. Some people like this, if I'm not on it right now, it's forgotten. And that's my important, it's not important, and it's gone, and I have so many flooding me. I needed to get these, if I could have gotten these seven, three, I've gotten four.
So let's talk specifically about that.
Okay.
Your TNR capacity right now is made up of what? You have once a week, a big means to say?
We're open five days a week.
We need more free ferals.
Every feral will take over from me, it's scheduled. And that we have the money to pay for.
We're doing a great one.
We currently, we current, we had one grant, and we have, we've utilized that first grant. We just got, um, basically the funding to do another 200. And when that's done, and, well, you know, so that's it. You know, we're going from grant to grant.
And you don't have anybody else doing, except for the van?
And FCCO doing the van.
So, let's start with this.
How many, I know what we need to balance this. So that's, we, I want to get ferals.
I think we need to have a number for the number that already done. We have a calculation, maybe not the number of people, either as the number of cats, or done with the number of surgeries.
That's what I was trying to get.
Feral cats, we don't get about 500 a year. 500 surgeries a year for feral cat.
In Salem?
From Salem.
What do we call Salem?
FCCO.
There you go. That's what I.
And we nearly increased that, did we?
Yes.
And.
And are those free?
Yes.
But earlier in the discussion, you made the point about feral. I mean, I think we pretty well agree, like, there's a lot of free roaming cats. And when you start labeling feral, like, like I said in my own situation, they're cat roaming, maybe they're feral, maybe they're roaming. Feral has a very specific meaning.
Yeah, that's okay, thanks for the reminder. Okay. And Humane Society, can you take a guess at how many year you're doing?
Well, we just started this program, so it's going to be hard to say.
The free, the free.
How many will be able to do free? We're doing a thousand low-income cats this year for people on government assistance. So that's a thousand. Okay?
I, I think we ran the numbers of how many cats we were doing from our partnerships, as well as people just bringing them in in traps. And it was a, it was a fairly small percentage of all the, of all the cat surgeries we did in a year.
What did you add for now, 200?
Well, it was, it was individual fundraisers last, this week, and it's going to be for 200, yeah. And we just did about 120, so that'll be 320. I'm never getting more money in, so I'm just not exactly sure how much.
All I'm trying to get at is, I think it would be useful, out of our discussion, to try and come up with a numerical goal for the community. So in Austin, we were providing 3,500, you know, 3,000 to 3,500 free for free roaming cats. And then we provided, I don't know, like, 10,000 or 12,000 a year for loading, pre-loading them. And then the two affordable clinics were providing around 30,000 a year. So you could get to the equation of, per capita, for a billionth floor population, we were providing, let's say that number was 50,000 affordable surgeries. And then they would say that got us to where we needed to be preventing. So I think it's a good thing to, to say, here we are today in 2014, and we think we have more cats, you know, 800 a year free, 1,000 a year low income. And what we'd like to be in two years is 5,000 total. I think that's a useful thing to do, because it will help you see progress. And it helps you see, um, keep your eye on this, that, um, if this number is going up, then it's measurable. And, um, we can see profit stores getting this number. So anyway, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, just, that's what I was trying to get at. And we don't have to think what that number is, but I think we should be thinking about that as a follow-up discussion that happens both in the next two, five years out, of what we got to see. Yes ma'am?
I know in my case, it's not a financial thing. I have taken care of a feral cat cohort group in my neighborhood, and I have one, and I can't spay and neuter because the clinics aren't giving often enough. I can't guarantee, I can make an appointment with the Humane Society for Wednesday. I can't guarantee I'm going to be able to catch that cat I'm in. I have one trap, I have four cats out there. I catch the same ones over and over, so. And I can't understand that, and I can't answer.
A food cage.
Then by the time I spend, I call around, make an appointment somewhere, feral cat population comes twice a month. So that means my cat has to sit in a cage for a week here. I can't, they're, they're not in it. Call Humane Society, they're booked for the next week. There's just not enough private beds to deal with.
We also do, we do, that's a commonality.
They, they do it.
Any game. That's not the usual, I've made some.
Well, if they do it to us, they can.
So I can't hear.
Yeah, I, we're proof, Satan, and Marcus says, "Call friends and Peline, and give them marketing, not a laugh, throw out."
But you can, you can.
All right, then, you guys have a discussion on yourselves that you have offline. Improve freedom, which is a different thing from like more capacity, right? We can do 5,000 surgeries tomorrow, but everyone saw that problem right now. Okay.
They prioritize based on.
Improve actually, I want to capture.
I want to. Yep. That's a good point.
So me in the grant writing business should write a grant to, um, get the private beds to do some. They will. Okay. So, are there one that you want to have, uh, solutions? Either do, do more TNR, or are there other solutions related to this part?
With the TNR, I think occasionally, I can still, instead of public education, people don't have TNR kids, or why they want it or not. So are we bringing a cat back to the community to make it good, or not? And that's like the end of the conversation on TNR.
I, I would add, though, for education, um, what, what can do? It's really great to have a lot of trappers. I mean, in Portland, the fastest early searchers have done my caregivers, so they're tracking their cats and bringing them to us. It's not trappers going to get them, not the visiting, the long trappers, it's great, having a great success rate. But I think getting the community on, they can make a difference. Really getting that power when we get bigger.
Okay. The foster program, 3,500 cats they do a year, 70 or 80% are by the public. So what we did there is we had our trappers target problem neighborhoods or problem properties. And so we gave them assignments. This is the Zippo, this area, this neighborhood, this person. And, I mean, even some of my boarding cases, we could have a feral cat people go in there, trap all the cats in their backyard. We could love people. Um, but then, um, the bulk of those were coming in from the public. So getting your, um, I don't want to put this in the list. Getting the public involved, whether it's through accepting that it's a legitimate thing, or whether it is actually getting them to start bringing in their cats, will help you a lot. Okay, other solutions that you want to talk about? If you don't have anyone, I want to play the sticky dog game again. Unless you just want to pick a vote. Because I still want to get into, some real specific things that you think are the biggest priorities that we could need to hear tonight, and, um, having some consensus about what direction we ought to go in beginning to get some of these solutions to come online. Does that sound like a good thing? So we could just go away with the whole list, but I'm not sure that, what we would do with the whole list. So, are you willing to play the dog game?
We'll go for those.
Just for the solutions, so question, sir.
Something that's not on there, low income, increase the low income spay neuter for high cats? Is that a term of the season?
It's going to stop the flow of potential future feral cats. Is that?
Yeah, that's true.
Because they're old cats.
They're old, but they're, they're not sterilized.
More by law, free.
The other one I want to add, because we talked about it right now, is getting private beds involved. And one of that is doing spay neuters, or doing discounts for low-income people, or just doing education, whatever. So now maybe the cheese. Okay.
That's it.
Okay, so keeping this least criteria in mind. So, these are the things that we talked about, being how we would decide whether a solution was really a good idea. So we're not going to decide based on, gee, you like red, and I like yellow. We're going to decide based on these things. So, keeping those things in mind, the question I'm asking you to answer is, what's the most important thing for us to start looking on the model to affect these five problems we talked about? So there's some immediacy in it. The question I'm asking you has some immediacy in it. But we're going to go do this. Because all of them, you need to do all of them eventually, but I'm asking you, what's the tip of the iceberg? And this is not a solution, this is just our line for, this is, this is the name of the game, right?
Under, under more TNR, are all those other ones below in part for more TNR, or do you want on those issues too?
What do you think? I think we should consider those individual things, because they may be something that is more important than something else. So we may consider those individual things.
Could you define again what improved access is?
Improved access is things like, do you have one location that's hard to get to? Or do you have five locations? So frequency and access.
And surgeries.
Okay. So frequency, I think about ideally seven days a week, you can get a feral cat, for free. Or access, I say ideally, I don't have to drive to the other side of town, because that's a pain in the butt. Makes sense? Especially if you have five feral cats in the backyard, right?
Okay, so is capacity probably over frequency now? But frequency isn't really their limit to do.
Well, capacity, in, in my mind. Well, capacity, in my mind, what capacity means is, if the Humane Society got a grant for a hundred thousand dollars to do a zillion feral cats. Do they have the capacity within their facility to do that? So in Austin, the Humane, the ASPCA gave us like a hundred thousand dollars. And I didn't have enough room in my shelter. I could do my animals, I didn't have another table. I would have to give up doing my shelter animals. And the two nonprofits that do affordable, who are low cost paid there for low income people, they didn't have enough table capacity. So the Humane Society did, only because it was a Texas A&amp;M training facility. We got Texas A&amp;M to agree that we could use their training facility to do feral cats. So that's what capacity meant to me. So capacity, access, and frequency in dollars, those are the four things that you have to have to do more surgeries. So I didn't write down capacity because I thought that, somebody said, that's not a problem. That if we had one letting you do our care. I guess eventually you take in the numbers and figure it out.
Yeah. A million dollars, yeah.
Within the shelter, we have two veterinarians who can do a cat spec in six minutes, two tables. And, you know, and we just started to run the bucky funds to be able to do them. So I think for now, I would keep capacity up there. Now, if you get a hundred thousand dollars like speak, and you may say, dang, we need another table and how to change it. But we can deal with that when the iceberg comes up. What?
Yeah, big problem though, the level of capacity.
That's frequency.
That's a problem.
That's frequency.
That's a big problem.
That's, so when we vote, that one's important, gee, and you can vote on that one. That's frequency. So access is where? Frequency is, let me just write down. I have a stuff, and then. Freedom. Frequency is how long? Capacity is a dollar for the dollar. Okay, so we're gonna do this dot chaos quickly. So get your dots, or we're, plant your dots again. Everybody spit their dots, make care of dots, everybody spit their dots? Everybody spit extra dots? If you're putting on an offset. While you're spinning your dots, keep in mind the criteria that we talked about. Did this make your tip? Okay. So now we kind of look at the same thing. We say, what are the big ticket things that came up? Dot. And then we have that one. And that one. And those of you that spit your dots over here, were you spinning your dots on the concept of less than do more TNR in general? Or you spit your dots at the dollar?
For eighty dollars, nine dollars.
Okay. Okay, frequency. Based on. So I hate surf all this. This one gets five. Um, the eight get four. Or then circle the P. Does, I don't know. So that's what we end up with as the most important. Based on where we are today. And based on those criteria that we thought were important. This is what we think, um, the most important. So now the big question for me is, how are we going to move forward to do those things? Cause it's a great tough list and I can look back to that, gee, it'll lead off everybody and then what will happen is we'll have a nice time together. And, um, when we're out of it. We will have a nice time together and we will have a list. But what we wanted to try to do is actually make something profitable. Laura?
I was just gonna point out that collaboration could involve, you know, getting private vets involved, getting public involved. Some of these other points would fall, I think, under, you know, collaboration. So it would sort of pull in, you know, it's sort of overarching. We should pull in some of these other, you know, issues.
Um, let me ask you this. So you, you guys have like a group of some time that's been working, is it an expert? So how do you feel about that group? That group is pretty representative of people in this group?
No.
Is there anybody from Perka that's?
We have no say in the community, we don't really have a problem with the city.
But I was gonna present it up to the people of the group. Yes. Cause what I'm thinking might be an idea is if we really can't go forward working on this with all of you in the group. Because it would be a big commitment, right? But I'm wondering, if you say, we give these priorities to that working group. And have that working group, um, working with you. And we could have, do people that work there, don't they? We could have quarterly feedback meetings with the larger group that are interested, that I would come facilitate, right? And we could get feedback from the working group, see how come, what specific steps are being taken, who's doing what. And keep it alive and keep it accountable. If they have small working groups working on it, and it's reporting back to the bigger group, then they actually have to work. I mean, they would anyway, because they care about it, right? But again, so it's a way to create accountability back to the larger community. And while we're doing that, we try to fill this room with vets and with, well, like people, with more regular people. And more regular people from diverse ethnic, cultural, all those things. And then you have a small working group that's feeding into a more inclusive, bigger community now. And that can be much better. Actually, um, I, I did this. We had the group that was made up of our Humane Society, self shelter, private, public shelter, and our two non-homies. And a couple of our cat people, different leaders. And you were working on the place and we had a meeting quarterly. And one day, a couple of years later, I had, um, span eaters. And I thought that, because you know, animal welfare is very white centric, and it's very middle class, female centric. Nationwide. So eventually, I started having people from the community that were coming to those meetings because they cared about what's happening in their neighborhood. And so that was a real win for us, really, I think, where we're speaking Spanish to each other, sitting in the room with us. And they cared about the cats and they were able to take them tracking. So maybe something like that will happen here with this kind of law. So how does that ring to you as a way that we might proceed? And I didn't ask anybody, I think we need to say to folks that are here, I didn't ask anybody if they like this idea, I just made it up, so. I want you to feel, well, because some people work for a living and some people do this as, they work for a living and they do this out of passion. And the people that works for them, they can't process. And they may not be able to say, yeah, that's a great idea, because they're possibly able to. So I understand that. I understand that this, um, yeah, possible. The way I think of that. And I am willing to facilitate quarterly meetings. And I'm willing to do some work with the smaller group if I find it's useful for the next few months or whatever. I thought it's, that's all. Great.
Thank you.
So if we do that, then what else would you like to see us discuss at the time?
How do you prepare for that meeting? Because maybe some people will have some input.
Um, I'm sorry, I can't just say. I just wanted to connect those two things, because we do need to do this if we're gonna do that. I'm sorry, can you say that again?
How to prepare for the next meeting? What you have in mind as it comes to the next meeting?
Well, I think how I would approach the next meeting, and this is what I would do. Is, um, we need, we need to get on target. So somebody needs to start working on getting data. That we can start using to say, let's go here and do this. And that data's gonna have to come from our shelters, where they're getting intake from, as well as our rescue groups. And whoever else knows. We're cleaning it. So what I'd like to see is if somebody maybe from the Humane Society can take the lead on data gathering. And I don't know if that's the appropriate entity. In, in, in Austin, I didn't, because we had the public, we had to open intake shelter and we, and we had BOLO the data. But we were the biggest gatherer of kittens. You know, the Humane Society sheltered three thousand animals a year and I sheltered twenty thousand. So it made sense for us to do the data gathering. But if someone starts working on data, then this can start happening pretty immediately. And we start knowing where animals come from. And if this starts happening immediately, the, our top two foot or top, you know, shelter intake and youth in Asia bait start going away. With just doing three hundred cats in Austin, I reduced my youth in Asia bait in one kitten season. Because they did the right cats. And I forget what the percentage points it was, but it was noticeable, like it went down ten percent, fifteen percent, or twenty percent. It was a big number from doing three hundred cats. They were right cats.
How did you find those right, right numbers? Here at Zipco, it's just too broad.
That's what I was gonna say.
We wouldn't know that record.
We can, we can plug in the addresses if everybody uses.
We, um. Yeah, we, we could do database searches. We have Chameleon as our database and we could do database searches at a more finite level than, um, Zipco. Combined with, um, some of my trappers do. But, I mean, some of the trappers are much bigger than kittens, but my intake people, like, we get a zillion kittens from this trailer park.
So I know, I know when we check in unowned intake, we check in the location found. And I don't know if there's a way to run a report pulling from that data field.
Pretty sure there is.
But I imagine there's some way.
Intake, intake by operation extended.
We may be able to run a report. You may have to put the word out to some of these people that are out there in the community. And, um, you may have to tell your intake staff, this is something we want to start knowing this kitten season. And they just start keeping track of it. My intake people knew when I said, what are my problem areas, they become this trailer park, this apartment complex.
The other thought I had is the field that I came out of is they have, you know, software, GIS software that will take. You're right, Zipco doesn't buy, would you really need at least a screen of ground or an intersection, something of that sort? I know, in fact, the city of Salem is big on GIS, they have. So I mean, one option could be to approach somebody from the city saying, if we gave you, you know, some of these addresses. They, they could geocode that to you and then basically create a map that would show you, you know, what the area of the city was coming from. I mean, just throwing that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what we did. We had the address, we ran the sample, put a dot on the map. And in the map that we leave up, we have those solids right there. But, but talking to people is important too, because there's, the dots on the map, and then there's something else. And then somebody says, we're getting a zillion kittens from this trailer park. And essentially, we'll have to go to the trailer park and talk to the manager. And the manager's like, yes, this is another cat that nobody can touch anyway. There's dots on maps, but there's other kinds of information that's out there. So that's something that if somebody can start working on, it would be good. Then, um, the other thing that I think needs to happen in terms of collaboration, well. The other thing I think needs to happen is the beginning of collaboration, is I think the working group needs to develop a mission statement. And some of you that were here, the last time I came, I had a sample one that I've done. That gets specific and measurable and tangible. So I think that needs to be the next step for that work. Then we do a whole, work together. I think there needs to be a coalescing of the group in something formal. With a formal mission statement about what they're doing. I can come on and do that. And when we get that done, we'll be, bring it back to the bigger group, so you can take over. I can do it with all of you, but it takes a little bit of time. That's not a very good way to get that done, but you'll like it. So that's what I think we have to do at the next meeting of that group. Is get that mission statement boiled down. Because doing these things, these little projects, that's great, but we still need to have a focus on this. And this mission statement thing will give us a way to stay accountable. And it's not a mission statement, it's like five pages long, has a bunch of blurs in it. It's a real specific thing that says, the purpose of the feral cat program. And that's most important. Purpose, pre-romy catalyzed. The reason of that is to do what? For what reason? And then you have measurements that you put underneath that that says, did you get that done? So I, I got my folks in Bend, a few ones. And they did the industrial cat program, although I beat them up every time I do it. So there says this, the purpose of the feral cat program is to provide sterilization services to unowned cats in the students county in order to reduce cat intake into animal shelters. Sterilization services are defined. We define what that is. It's a circular, rabies vaccination, and year to year. So once we wrote that down, that group is never again gonna have a meeting and says, are we tipping ears or not tipping ears? Because that's what we decided. So that's what you get to, is then you stop a lot of circular discussions about, are we gonna give rabies vaccinations? Are we gonna give FIP, uh, vaccinations that have initials? So, does that sound useful? So it gives that working group, it gives them, this says this, it's all good. And then we committed to measurements. So because what we said, the reason we're doing it is to reduce cat intake. Then our measures are a percent reduction in cat intake. The number of reduced cat intakes. And, um, then zero youth in Asia of feral cats, which is all on the national plan. And then you also measure the efficiency, which is the cost for you to provide the services, and how many of them you provide. So I think if we do something like that, it gives that working group an accountable thing, makes it into a program, a collaborative program. But it also brings something back to you guys to say, is this what you signed up for? And then if you did, you don't have any more discussions about whether you're not tipping ears. I mean, you can have one, but you see what I mean? It gets you focused. It gets your focus, and you stop spending your energy spinning around.
Rehashing.
Rehashing stuff. So we get that out of the way, and then we say, "This is what we're all doing. This is the drug we're all marching to." And you'll be amazed how that clears the deck to move on with doing that, because you're not having a meeting every two weeks to talk about the same stuff over and over again, because now a different player comes in and has a different opinion. So that's what I would do with the next meeting of that group, is get that done. Then, um, in, in the meantime, um, while we're getting ready for that meeting, somebody should be getting started on this. And the shelter, how does the sheltering work here? Is the Humane Society contracted to be the open intake shelter?
Well, just for cats.
Just for cats.
No, we're not contracted.
And we're not contracted.
Who, who does your, who does your open intake sheltering of animals in general?
We're the only resource for cats in Marion, Capitol County. There is, Marion County has a dog control, or, I mean, sorry, we're not the only resource. But there's the only open admission resource for cats. So there's no contract.
Well, the only reason I was asking is that if there is some shelter that has a contract with the city to do sheltering, they know somebody in the city.
The city doesn't do anything.
The city doesn't do anything.
They do dogs.
Do they do any dogs, Harry?
Dogs.
Dogs.
And none of us know them?
Oh, we know the dog people.
Yeah. Well, knowing the dog people is a way to find out who is the public health director. I can talk to somebody with this, because I came from the city, I know how to do this. Okay, so we just, at this next meeting, so I think, Ash, we should proceed, is, the next meeting, let's get the missions thing worked out, and get that working group really practically put together. And then they'll be assigned, you want to be three, four, five, six things. And we can divvy up how we're gonna go about doing that. Now, so is, would that feel like enough progress? If we get the group together, we get the mission statement thing worked out, and then either in that meeting or the next meeting, because it may not be enough time, and then we put it in the next meeting, then we sort out how we're gonna tackle these things. And then everybody would be happy if we get back and said we did that. And the other thing I want to talk about for just a second is that, um, we need people to be in that group that want to do work, and not just have opinions.
Yeah.
So if we don't have the right people in the group, even if we love those people, we should move those people out, and get people to be in there that want to do work. Because we do need to have collaboration, and what collaboration is made up of is people to work. When I was running the shelter, I had like a million four people that told me what to do. I had like 10 that wanted me to do it. And so it can be overwhelming, and so the whole thing can be overwhelming. So we need to have a working group that can do work. And if we don't have the right people now, as much as we love them, and we love their passion and appreciate them, then we need to adjust the group before we get settled into the mission statement and get the stuff going. So do we have the right people?
If we can take the people we have and clone them, you know, it'd better stick.
Well, maybe.
Yeah, because everybody already is probably tapped out. A lot of people in this room are probably already doing a lot, so it's trying to find time to do more, right?
Right. Well, I'll tell you what, and somebody opened me up a member list. Jay, somebody, are you making notes? Okay. So I think we should talk about that at the next working group meeting. Let's talk about what resources the working group needs. And do we have the right people in that group? And we can, and by that, I don't mean individuals, I mean, do we need somebody that can work on the networking thing? And then if so, let's find that person.
I think our group is well represented, in my opinion. In my strong opinion, I'm not talking, we have people that are communicating, we have the people that are working. I think we're very well represented, in my strong opinion, but I experienced in four years.
Okay.
Yes, man? Everybody in the working group? Is that what you're suggesting? I thought the working group was going to be smaller.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they have a group, they, I'm not sure.
It's like six years old.
There's a few people that are working out together. What I'm suggesting is that will be the core group.
Gotcha.
To try to make headway on this. And then we'll report back to the bigger group, which hopefully gets bigger, on what kind of progress we're making, and what we're doing related to these things. So if you think about this as our strategic plan, we're gonna give this strategic plan to that working group that already exists. So the question I've been asking is, do we have the right people in that group? Because I don't know who they are. And, but I think we can just talk about that in the group, and see if we need to plug any hole or fill any gaps with, um, other resources. We can talk about that. So at the next meeting, we should, um, talk about whether we've got the right working group. And then if we do, get on with the mission statement. If we don't, we can decide whether we want to put that off. But, you know, we should just do the mission statement, where we need to join the group, please. Place our name and say, "I did it." Okay, so go off and do those things, um, then do you guys feel like this was time well spent?
Yes.
Okay, so the other thing we want to make sure we can follow up on is, is that we'll commit to quarterly meetings like this, to keep this alive. Do you guys are willing to commit to that? I think they'd be shorter. It was a huge thing for me in Austin, when I started having those quarterly meetings, it was a huge thing. And at first, it was a lot of debate. Because you know, cat people, they don't like the fox, anybody sympathetic to cat people, especially, you know, I was in charge of animal health and the animal cruelty, which was, you know, seizing cats from quarantine situations. And so there was a lot of distrust, and, um, uh, you know, people weren't going to go through, they didn't want to be apartment, they were not sure what was going on. Once I got those quarterly meetings, everybody started getting in for the room together, that really fit into more people getting involved. And when we first started, it was this many people on this side of the room, and, you know, two years later, I had, you know, many people in the room. We got this, so I think the quarterly meetings will help you grow enthusiasm and excitement about what you're doing. Okay. Then I'm feeling done. Y'all are feeling done. Is there any final remarks you would like to make? Did everybody say everything you wanted to say?
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you.
Yeah, is there any, I'll keep figuring anything else, Jay? Everybody got a list?
Yeah, and we will be sending the minutes in this meeting. We invite you to invite your friends, get the word out about what's going on and how we can make this grow. So, and we'll, we'll keep in touch. If you came here, and this is your first time, you'll be hearing from us. We're so grateful that you came.
Thank you for organizing.